A call to order, the September the eighth meeting of the Lee County Board of Education. We have some guests I would like to introduce. Laurie Salafia from the military is here with us. It's always good to have you with us. And if you would now join me in a moment of silence, please. Thank you, and if you would now join, stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It is now time for public comments, and I would like to share the order of business here. In order that the board may fairly and adequately discharge the overall responsibility, citizens of Lee County desiring to address the board shall be given the opportunity to sign up the day of the meeting in order to be placed on the board of agenda. The chairperson will allow three minutes, not to exceed thirty minutes, and Dr. Bryan will keep time. To ensure an orderly presentation and disposition of items, board members will not respond to individuals who address the board except to request clarification of the points made by the presenter. Public comments shall not interfere with the board's duty to conduct orderly and efficient meetings. Individuals who address the board shall not use language that obscene, vulgar, contain fighting words, or otherwise disrupts the orderly conduct of business. Discussions regarding particular employees, litigation, student records, or other potentially confidential matters may not be discussed during the public comment session. Persons who willfully interrupt, disrupt, or cause disturbances at official meetings of the board may be directed to leave by the board chair. And although he was late, I have decided that Mr. Keith Clark can now speak to the board. And I would ask you a question before you begin. Are you here as a member of the board of trustees of the college, or you're here as an individual citizen? You may proceed.
Mr. Chairman, I appreciate you letting me speak. I have never quite figured out what things the board sticks to the letter on and where it has flexed a little bit and where it doesn't. I just-
That's not a good way to start.
Okay, do I get to start over?
You may.
Okay. I know that folks are sensitive to criticism, and whenever I've made helpful comments and pressed them, I'm often told, "Why are you attacking us like Jim Warmer?" The difference is, I support the schools, and really, he'd like to get rid of them. Now, I want to tell you, I don't know what to say. I know what you're going to propose. I know the wording of the motion, but I'm here now on behalf of all the people that do not know that you will consider, make a decision that will affect this county for fifty years in recommending a preferred property for your new elementary school. Congratulate Mrs. Brogan. I spoke with her about two o'clock till about one-thirty, and pointed out, and she couldn't tell me whether this was going to be on the agenda or not, I asked her, "Isn't, don't she make it a little uncomfortable that you can't tell a citizen whether a decision of this magnitude is going to be made at a meeting that takes place at six o'clock?" Well, I don't know what she did, but I know at two-thirty Sandra Bowen got a call and told it would be on the agenda. Now, I'm the one who stood here and made the proposal for a magnet school in downtown Santa. I appreciate your accommodation, but I do not understand, what's the hu- if I have two questions, and I stand here for all the people who want this to go forward, in the presence of some people I know don't. Why the rush, and why the hush? I learned when I dealt with issues of ethics with members of this board, there was a feeling, if we're not required to do it by the law, we don't have to do it. Well, you ask extra effort from your students. I'm calling you to have extra effort. You're making the decision that would be asked the voters in 2016 to vote on, and I think it is disrespectful of those voters to consider this meeting in a way that it was hidden from the public. I had to dig for four days to find out about it. Many of you were called to consider this action in a hush and a rush. And those are my two questions that I want to come away with. Why the hush, and why the rush?
Thank you. There are no public speakers, so this segment of our program is over. I would now like to share Lee County's vision as a school system. Lee County Schools, in partnership with the community, will provide challenging learning experience for students in a safe and supportive environment. We are committed to academic excellence, technological innovation, social responsibility, and lifelong learning. Our success will be demonstrated by the achievement of our students and their positive participation in society. And I would now like to share the code of ethics that guides the actions of each member of this board. We must avoid conflicts of interest and appearance of conflicts of interest as we handle the work of the board. We must avoid the solicitation and/or acceptance of gifts in return for advice or assistance on matters concerning the operation of the business of the board. We must avoid the misuse of public funds, avoid misrepresentation or falsification of facts, and we must avoid making confidential information public. Before I ask for a motion to approve the agenda, I would like to amend the agenda in the following method. I would like to add a number-two item under new business, and that would be a motion to approve site school selection. So with that change, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve tonight's agenda.
The motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
The motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. The motion to approve the agenda as presented passes. Next, is there a motion to approve the minutes for eight-eleven and nine-one-two thousand and fifteen?
I'll make the motion that we approve the minutes of August eleventh and September first of two thousand and fifteen.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. The motion approved. The minutes are approved. We can now continue with reports. Under chairman's report, I would like to commend the superintendent for the August nineteenth convocation at the Wicker Center that included all of the employees of Lee County Schools. And I've never seen all the employees of Lee County Schools in one room before, and it was breathtaking. I guess that's a good word. It was exciting. It was exhilarating. I think we kicked off the school year in a fine fashion. It was really good to see all of our employees in the same room together before we started. And Dr. Bryan, I think we continue with superintendent's report.
Dr. Smith, I'll start with just superintendent's extra effort award. Because our person cannot be here tonight, we're going to have to postpone that presentation to our next meeting in October, so we'll be presenting two plaques in October for that. So double the fun with that. Second item, Dr. Smith, is involving accountability, test scores and results that were announced last week. I'd like to talk about two items in reference to that. One is our overall graduation rate, which has improved again from eighty-seven point five to eighty-nine point one percent. Feel very good about graduation rate and where that is, where it compares to state graduation rate, and the progress of our subgroups in those areas. And had significant increases in a number of subgroup areas that we're very proud of, and feel like that that's a good indicator of the good work that's going on. I've always said that graduation rate is a system number, a system number that is indicative of what is happening, and as we like to say, pre-K fourteen in Lee County Schools. The other thing that I'll address, which I've also addressed in the media the last few days, is in regards to growth. And I think I've made it very clear that we're not satisfied with our overall growth numbers, and know that we need to support improvement there. I think in discussing growth numbers, need to keep two overarching themes in mind. One, we want to make sure that we support our students and teachers so that they can be successful in our schools. And number two, we want to make sure that supporting student growth is a logical sort of extension of student learning. And I think it's important, those two overarching themes are sort of part of this. In October, we will be presenting a more formalized plan to you, but I did want to go over some things that are going to be a part of that plan, things that are important for us, I think, as we look to improve our growth scores. One of the things which I've already noted previously in the last week, we are already in the process of thorough analysis of our most recent student data to improve instruction. We want to look at that not only from a perspective of subgroups and overall scores, but how that has been impacted by growth. We will actually be having a session on Monday morning in regards to that with our principals throughout the district. And we'll be discussing growth numbers and sort of a recap of what we have seen during the course of the past year. We'll also be looking at some other data collection points that we get during the course of the year. We collect a vast array of data from our students, not only through sort of end-of-course and end-of-grade scores, but also things that we collect as we go through the elementary, middle, and high school levels. So we'll be reviewing that as well. We'll also be setting up growth targets for individual students and schools as we go through, go to the coming year, make sure that everybody knows what we have to do in order to improve growth areas. Number three, we're going to be working on a better alignment of our teacher professional development with Common Core tests. We need to make sure that the professional development is focused in on what we need to do. We're going to be talking to teachers about that and making sure we're getting their input, also administrators, to make sure that we're really aligned with what we're doing with that. Number four, we're going to more carefully align Common Core curriculum with what's being taught in the classroom. The shift to Common Core certainly is something that everybody has worked through throughout the state. We want to make sure that our teachers are doing what they need to do to teach Common Core and make sure it's aligned with what's going on in the classroom, day in and day out. Number five, we're going to seek even more collaboration than what we have right now, and that collaboration is not only going to be within schools but across schools, and we're going to work to ensure that our very best teachers are working with teachers throughout the district about what is working and what is being successful in the classroom. It's a very much continuous improvement model where we're taking our teachers who are really doing a good job and sharing that information and knowledge with folks across the district. Number six, we want to make sure we have teacher support through our lead teachers, who I think, who are already in place. They were put in place this summer, particularly working the areas of language arts and math. And we're going to ensure that they are continuing to work with teachers. It's really great support for teachers, particularly new teachers, who are working through sort of some of the nuances of the changes in the curriculum and what they need to be doing with Common Core in the classroom. Seven, and we've already started doing this, reworking our pacing guides for students and also formative assessments, making sure they're aligned with the curriculum. And we're reviewing that, been doing that throughout the summer, and we'll continue to do that as we collect more data as we go through the next week. Number eight, we're going to try to even more effectively engage parents and community members to come in with tutoring efforts for students in schools, for students in our schools. I think we're very fortunate to have a very supportive community and very supportive parents. It's, I think, one of the backbones of why we've been able to be so successful with the graduation rate. So we're going to continue working on that and look for ways to bring more parents and community members into our schools, support tutoring, and support. Number nine, we're going to do everything possible, and I've sort of said this already, but do everything possible to mentor and support teachers, particularly the new ones. And we'll be seeing teacher input on that and working to support students in the classroom to make sure they're getting the lessons they need. Number ten, we're going to be enhancing tutoring for students in EOC and EOG courses. We will make sure that we ratchet up what we need to do, and that will include opportunities after school and on Saturdays as well, to make sure that we, as we work through sort of issues that students might have as they go through the school semester or year, that they have opportunities to learn what they need to learn and be successful. And finally, we're going to continue to seek ways to try to provide teachers more time to teach, make sure that they have the opportunity to do what they need to do in the classroom, and eliminate any distractions or things that might be in the way for them. So that is sort of an eleven-piece list of sort of big ideas, big targets that we're shooting for. We're going to be putting those details down and giving you the more comprehensive piece of that at the next board meeting. Much of this has already been put into motion and in place starting back to the summer, and we're going to work really diligently to make sure that it has a positive outcome next spring. Any questions on that before I move on to the next topic?
Well, Andy, I wanted to talk about something. Looking at this data, I've been looking at it since, I guess, since it all came out in the news, and the one thing that concerns me is, and I don't know that I'm alone in saying this, is the graduation rate. Everyone talks about how great the graduation rate, but what stuns me is the proficiency rate at our high schools. And that, I think, is something that we need to look at. If we're graduating eighty-nine point one percent of our students, and yet, when you look at the three high schools proficiency rates, average forty-four point seven-five percent, that's a huge concern to me. That says less than half of our high school students are testing at a level three, four, or five. We're graduating them, but what does that mean if their proficiency rates aren't at the state standard? If we say we want our students to graduate with more than a high school diploma, I certainly want those that are graduating with just that high school diploma to have something that's marketable and not be less competent than some fifty-five percent of their peers. And I think that's a concern that needs to go stated. One thing that I didn't see in the plan that I would like to see in the plan, too, is the analysis of all these different programs we've done. You said all this data that we've collected, really measuring whether avid is showing positive growth in those students. Can we measure the avid cohort against the non avid cohort and prove growth in that area? Because if we're going to have the programs, we want to have the progress to go with it. And so that's, you know, that's some of the data. I'd definitely love to see, and I'm sure that's part of that, like you said-
Absolutely.
-bucket of data to be analyzed. But that's just something I wanted to put in perspective. I don't know that it hit everyone else like it did me, but I wanted to put that out there, that we're graduating an exceptional number of students, and that's something to be proud of, but what does that mean when you turn that against the proficiency data?
And at the end here, I'll try to put a little bit of a face on that.
Perspective.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Perspective on that. And I think with the proficiency, I think some of that comes back to, I mean, I think everybody would agree that we want to do better, no doubt about that. And I hope I've made that clear to everybody.
Oh, absolutely.
The other part of that, though, is I think that we need to make sure that we keep in perspective with the number of students that are being tested at the high school level, the number of students, particularly this sort of a final cohort that has sort of gone through, that has had a number of courses that were taught at the middle schools, and I'm talking about growth now, a number of students that were taught at the middle school and took their high school courses at the middle school, and then when they're tested, they don't count in growth when they get to the high school. Now, I know you're referencing proficiency on some of that. I think that goes back to what I was sort of, maybe indirectly addressing with what I was saying about alignment of curriculum. I think that comes back to what we're trying to do within those EOC courses at the high school level, to make sure that they're aligned. And I will come back to the comment about where our graduates are graduating with and add at least a perspective to that.
All right. Thank you.
On that note, and I'm going to stay, if it's okay with you all, I'm going to stay on the snapshot for the class two thousand and fifteen, then I'll go to bus safety after that. Last week, we produced some information in regards to the class two thousand and fifteen, sort of a snapshot somewhat you're referencing, Ms. Bowen, about what does it mean to graduate? And obviously, our board has taken a stance about more than a diploma. From our recollection and sort of analysis, approximately eighty-four percent of students graduated with more than a diploma. We had eighty-seven North Carolina academic scholars. We had forty students who graduated with an associate's degree. We had one or more, we had a hundred and eighty-eight students who took one or more AP courses, and that ranged from a perspective of students who took just one AP course, which is great, I think, who, students who are trying to sort of stretch themselves, to we had a few students who actually took eleven AP courses during the course of their high school career, which I think speaks for itself as well. Total number of AP courses, classes taken was five hundred and ninety-eight total. One or more college credits, we had two hundred and twenty-seven graduates who had one or more college credits, and the ranges on that was all the way from one college credit to we had some students who graduated with thirty college credits. Total college credits, we had a thousand sixteen hundred twenty-one. We also had a number of students with one or more CTE credentials, two hundred and thirty-two. Total credentials was four hundred and eighty-seven. One or more articulation credits, a hundred and fourteen students. Work key certificates, two hundred and fifty-four, and one or more endorsements, three hundred and ninety-three students. And over ninety-five percent of students in that class attained math three or higher in their math sort of attainment level with that. Certainly some things I think are worth noting and we should be excited about. We want to build on that for our students. Last week at State Board, it was probably one of the things that was sort of, didn't get as much of a headline as what other things did. Number of, percentage of students with credentials was sort of ranked in the state, and what they do is they compare total number of students in credentialed courses with the number that get a credential, and fifty-six point two, I believe, don't quote me under point two, ended up with a credential in, out of a course. And out of the state, that was six out of a hundred and fifteen school districts. So that was certainly very positive news with that. So I wanted to put a little bit, and I'm glad you brought that up, Ms. Bowen, sort of put a face on that and what that meant for the class of two thousand and fifteen, and sort of what it means to graduate with more than a high school diploma. And we think that those numbers will continue to increase. Questions about that?
Dr. Bryan?
Yes, sir.
What subjects do we have proficiency on? What subject are the student tested on for the proficiency?
At the high school level.
At the high school level, because I know it's not all the subjects.
It's with the math one, biology and English, too. Final item on my report- No questions. Final item on my report tonight is regarding bus safety, and I sort of lumped that together as one bigger idea, bigger item. Going back to what happened last week in regards to a couple incidents at one of our elementary schools, I think what's important for us to note is, we want to make really thoughtful, deliberate changes that are beneficial to our students, to our parents and our schools. And I think that we want to make sure that we, whatever changes we put into place, we get it right. We've had some very extensive conversations with our principals and staff about bus procedures, particularly in the afternoon at our elementary schools. And as I told someone the other day, we have nearly twelve thousand sort of bus stops during the course of a day, and we really try to be accommodating for our parents in trying to make changes and making sure that those things happen. At the same time, when we have so many changes which happen during the course of the day, that increases the opportunity for human error. But we have sort of had each school look at their procedures, have discussions with staff, make sure everybody's on the same page about what we need to be doing to ensure every student's safety in the afternoon. However, beyond that, thing is really important, and I've talked to Reed Kagle about this. I'm going to, well, actually, I've already started forming an advisory committee on bus safety issues, and Reed is going to be the chair of that committee, and he will be working with some other folks within the district to make some recommendations very soon to expand upon what we've already done. As part of that advisory group, they will also be looking at some more uniform bus transportation procedures across schools, which includes student pickup, bus transfer, and transportation changes from parents, the procedures that we have in place for We want to make sure everybody's on the same page, and we want to make sure we communicate that with our parents and make sure that everybody is following the correct procedures so we get our students where they need to be. Final thing which I'm recommending is, we're already in the process of exploring some technology options that we have become aware of that do a pretty good job, at least from our initial investigation, of tracking student movement on buses and providing communication for parents. We've actually discussed this with a school district in Texas with some things that they have done and some technology they have that they really like and believe has made a difference for them. So Mr. Kagle is already in the process, has made contact with them, talked to them about that, and I think it might be beneficial for us to look at that for our school buses. Questions or thoughts on the bus safety issue? And I will say, as you're thinking about that, I couldn't think of a better person to put in charge of something like that than Reed Kagle to form, head up a committee like that.
Dr. Bryan, I hate to take you back to the question on academics. I know we have trouble finding out science and math teacher. Do we have all that we need now? And also, I want to ask if, what do you call it? Because that's very important to what we're doing since the kids are getting tested in the early science and math and all of that. So do we have the number of employees that we want, and how experienced are they teaching these classes? Because I know we have a lot of turnover a few years back.
Yeah, yeah. I think most school districts, I'll speak generically first, most school districts, if you're going to talk about subject areas where there's a difficult time to get teachers, it's probably in that science, math area. And we have principals out here today that could probably vouch for that. You know, we try to look far and wide, just like all other school districts do. I think we're, I looked at John back there, he and I haven't talked about today, but two openings with that. You know, everybody's looking for the same sort of areas, and I think math and science are the very top as far as finding quality people for that. And, you know, we're going to do everything we can to try to get the best folks in there, and I think we're very excited about the folks we have teaching science and math this year, and I'm adding math in there. And we're going to really try to, as I outlined before, throw that support behind them to make sure they're successful.
That's all my questions.
Anyone else?
When you talk about ramping up the tutoring, what kind of qualifications- When you talk about ramping up the tutoring, what kind of qualifications, how are we going to do that?
Well, I think it's going to be, what we've always taken is sort of a three-pronged approach. We have teachers who are, who do tutoring in the afternoons. We have community members who come in sometimes during the course of the day or sometimes in the afternoon, depending upon how it fits into their schedule. And sometimes we also have some electronic support we can get for students as well. So we're going to try to enhance those three areas and make sure that our students are ready to go. And once again, I keep using the word aligned, but aligned to the curriculum and what we need to do to be tested. That concludes my report. Dr. Smith?
Thank you, Dr. Bryan. Let's continue with committee reports. Curriculum instruction, Mrs. Brogan, please.
Thank you, Chairman. We had, since the beginning of school, we had one curriculum instruction committee meeting. And that was last week on September 2nd at Lee County High School at 3:30. And basically, we had an instructional update from Mr. Conway. And Dr. Bryan talked about the performance grades and the graduation rate. We talked about that. We also, Mr. Conway talked about the lead teachers and how they will provide assistance for all teachers and make sure that the curriculum's, there's alignment in the curriculum. There's that word again, alignment. And also help with resource libraries and staff development. And so there's a support system for teachers. And we also heard from the different high schools and they talked about how the beginning of the year went for them so far. And pretty much overwhelmingly, everything was going well with all the schools, which is great. And there have been some changes. Bragg Street had an art addition. Four teachers in Avid now. They have a math cohort in Keenan Fellows. And, let's see, oh yeah, and the early college talked about how their orientation that they do, that special student orientation went really well again this summer. So we had an update from all the high schools. And our next curriculum instruction meeting will be tomorrow. The middle school curriculum instruction will be at Stanley Middle School at 3:30. And then we have our elementary curriculum instruction meeting on following week, on September 16th, at Edwards Elementary School at 3:30. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Brogan. Let's continue with facilities and technology. Mr. Sharp?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our last facilities meeting was held on August 25th, where we discussed the Sully Hall of Fame, which is on tonight's agenda. And we're also, we're discussing Crosswalk at Bragg Street, which we're still working on. Our next meeting will be September 15th at 5:00.
Thank you, Mr. Sharp. Finance, Mr. Akonoshu?
Yes, last month, we canceled the meeting because the budget was not conclusive from the state. So we feel we have nothing to discuss yet, but our next meeting will be on the 24th of this month.
Thank you, Mr. Akonoshu. Policy, Mrs. Bowen?
The policy committee met on August 18th, and it was a learning curve for both Ms. Davis and myself, but we bumbled our way through it. And we successfully reviewed two policies that are on for first reading tonight. Policy 3460 having to do with graduation requirements. And this wasn't a change to anything with graduation. It was simply to bring the wording in line with what we're doing and to update the policy. It wasn't a change to the policy. And then policy 4110, the immunization and health assessment. The state had passed some new requirements for immunizations, and we just basically had to bring our policy in line with state law. So we do have those two policies on for first reading this evening. And our next meeting is scheduled for this month, September 22nd, 5 o'clock.
Thank you, Mrs. Bowen. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none, all who is in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. The consent agenda is approved. There is no unfinished business, so we'll proceed with new business. Item number one is board policy, and this will be a first reading for the policies just described. Is there a motion to approve those policies on first reading?
The motion is coming from committees. Okay, I'll make the motion that we approve policy 3460 and 4110 for first reading.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is any discussion on the two board policies that have been presented? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. The board policies have been approved as presented. The next item is the item that has been added as an amendment to our agenda, and it's a motion to approve school site selection. And just to kind of set the stage for where we are in this process, I would like to share policy code 9010, titled Site Selection. And it states, "The board will select future school sites in a manner consistent with facility needs as identified by the long-range plan, and that would be our capital improvement plan. The board will consider options for acquiring property and buildings that are within its legal authority are economically sound and meet immediate and future needs. The superintendent shall assist the board in the site selection. In making recommendations to the board, the superintendent must consider the following factors, along with any other factors a superintendent determines to be appropriate: the size of the site, the cost for acquisition, suitability for intended use, a site's accessibility, and whether a site meets all legal requirements. The superintendent shall investigate and recommend to the board reasonable options for acquiring property or buildings such as purchasing, leasing, or entering into relationships with other governmental agencies or private businesses as permitted by law. The superintendent is authorized to select and work with consultants in identifying and assessing site options. Any contract for professional services must be reviewed by the board attorney, approved by the board, and meet any applicable board policies." So that is the policy that governs how we choose a site selection for a new facility. And on a personal note, I'd like to add this before we introduce the motion. "The need for a new elementary school is self-evident and well documented, having been included in the capital improvement plan for at least as many years as I've been on this board. We have had numerous conversations with county officials about both the need for a school and its potential location. Additionally, it was suggested that the location of the new school complement the city's downtown revitalization plans and enhance our community's economic development efforts in general. The WB Wicker property was suggested by county manager John Crumpton and fits the criteria for the site for our next elementary school. Having said that, I will entertain a motion to approve the school site selection."
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that the Lee County Board of Education recommend to Lee County Board of Commissioners that the WB Wicker property be the preferred site for our next new elementary school.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. The floor is now open for discussion.
Mr. Chairman and board members, I just want to say that, you know, I went and saw the property and I'm excited about moving forward with this, especially because of the overcrowding we've had at our elementary schools for the last couple of years. It's been really a tight fit and it's long overdue. And I'm excited that we can get this process going to expand in other facilities so we can get some students out of mobile units and get them into a brick and mortar school. But also, looking at the structures that are on that property and thinking about how we can save money moving forward with this, in that it would, it would be a good fit. Of course, we want to be as frugal as we can and efficient with the funds as we can. And so looking at being able to use existing structures that are already there and being able to renovate what needs to be renovated and be able to use those buildings, I think that makes perfect sense to be able to help us to be very efficient with the funds and save money that way. So that makes sense to me that we would pick that property. But also because that property has a history in the community and it's, there's a lot of people who went to school there that are very passionate about their school that they went to. And I think that it's only fitting that we would, for those reasons I mentioned before, but also use property that has a history that's in the community and give it a second chance of life. And reusing that property and renovating it and making it a first-rate elementary school. I think that's a wonderful continued legacy for that property, for Wicker School.
Is there any discussion?
I just want to say that since we started this process, I've been involved with some of the processes. And one of the things that attracted me to that property, we never knew that we were going to even be talking about that particular property because we were just looking for a place to build the next school. But as we were just discussing, the county approached us with it. And I would never say no to something that we need, that we have to have as a board. And based on that and the cost efficiency, the structure's there, already there. It's going to save the county plenty of money. We don't have to go and be looking for land that lands speculate on now if they hear Lee County Schools want to build a school. A land that they were holding for 150,000, 200,000 will go to $3 million because they know it's going to be government and they know that we have pot of money that we're going to use. So all of those things, in light of all of those things, I was, I became very supportive of it. And I feel like this is an opportunity that is very good for the board to build a new school. The structures are there. The architect had looked at it and they said the structures are strong and the building already there. So it's just a win-win situation for us to have a new school that we don't have to demolish anything. Now we just have to start school there in a few years. So I'm very happy about that. It's going to save us money. It's not going to be where we have to do some new land excavation and refilling. It's already there. So I'm excited about that for the new generation of schools that we're going to have. And we want to build a very special school in that part of town. So that's wonderful.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. There are no naysay, no votes, so the motion carries. So we will forward this to the county commissioners. What this means is that we have just selected the WB Wicker site as our...